Okay, council, we have roll call. Ms. Suzanne.
A quorum has been declared. All counselors are present except for Counselor Daniel, who is not present.
And her absence would be unexcused.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, we have the agenda approval, Council Veho.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda with the unexcused absence from Ms. Daniel.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Suzanne.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, citizen comment. That this is a portion of the agenda where we ask the citizens who turned in a comment card already to come up to the podium. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. We do have a clock right here. If you're still talking at the three minute mark, I will politely ask you to end those comments at that particular time. So that we can make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak during this segment who's turned in a card. The first person I have listed on the card is Bruce Rosengren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
My name is Bruce Rosengren. I'm the Vice President for Community Engagement and Communication at Adams State University, and it's my pleasure today, this evening, to introduce the interim President of Adams State University, David Tanberg. David most recently was the Senior Vice President at SheHo, State Higher Education Executive Officers Association. Prior to that, he was an adjunct professor at Florida State University and also Special Assistant to the Secretary of Education in the Great Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. David holds a bachelor's degree from Adams State, a master's, and also a PhD from Penn State University. David Tanberg.
It's a real honor to be here today, Mr. Mayor and council members. The Valley and Alamosa and Adams State are all very close to my heart. It was a real moment of reflection as I drove into Alamosa last week to take on this new position. The weight of the position, the relationship between Adams State and the city and the Valley itself was what was weighing on my mind. And I hope that weight never leaves me. I can tell you that as I've made my way around campus over the last few days, I'm quite new. But as I've made my way around campus and talked to staff and faculty and students, I can tell you there's a great sense of optimism at Adams State. I feel that all of us see a bright future. We're proud of our tradition. We're proud of where we're at. We're proud of where we've come from. And that pride is motivating us forward. And it's very clear to me that the success of Adams State is dependent on a strong relationship between the university and the city. That was something I appreciated as a student over 20 years ago, and I look forward to maintaining and strengthening during my time here. And so I'm looking forward to our conversations, our collaboration, mutual idea, idea generation, and the good work that we can do together. Thank you so much for letting me join you this evening, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, council. We don't have any other comment cards, so we're going to go and move on down to the next item on the agenda, Consent Calendar A.
Mayor, did we want to check on Zoom to make sure there's no public comments through Zoom?
Yes, if we could.
I doubt there is, but we might want to ask.
Oh, yes, let's go ahead and do that, too. Okay, Ms. Suzanne, could you please give instruction to the Zoom participants on how to raise their hand and be recognized to make any comments if they have any comments at this time?
Yes. If you are on the Zoom app and want to make public comments, use the Raise Your Hand feature on the bottom of the screen or dial star nine if you are on the telephone.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so I'll bring it back over to staff for any additional comments.
Nope, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right. Brings us to Consent Calendar A. Did you make a motion already?
Waiting on you, man.
Okay, go ahead, Council Veho.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, start voting, please. Ms. Suzanne.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, Presentation from an Outside Agency, La Pointe Update. Mr. Lance.
We good to go?
Yes, we're good to go. You're going to go ahead and start that.
Okay, my name is Lance Cheslock. I'm the Director over at La Pointe since 1989. And I wanted to give you an overall overview of what La Pointe is doing, but I wanted to start just giving, answering the question that comes up a lot. Is homelessness getting worse? Are there, is it, you know, what is happening there? And, you know, when I look, when I came, we were having 1,100 new unduplicated individuals a year as intakes. When we began our prevention program in the 90s, that number got cut in half. And so it's really, the actual number is a contribution of people who have are employment ready when they come to a shelter or when they're homeless, and those who are not employment ready, that they have barriers. The economy basically fluctuate, when it fluctuates, the numbers of those who are employment ready, those numbers spike. Those numbers have been low for a period of time. So in that, if we're going into a recession, of course, of course, they will go up. But that number that are folks that have a lot of barriers, those that are primarily unsheltered or that take a lot of time, that number over the years has been, you know, a percentage of about 12% to 15% of our overall numbers. And that number has been slowly kind of inching up. Wanted to just have people know that. Our housing, our housing shortage, and then also resources to retain people in housing are a couple of the things that are going on. So if we look at the overall scale of what La Pointe does, you have our pie charts up there. You can see that the resources that we provide or the number of services that we provide as a breakdown by county up there. So of course, Alamosa receives nearly half of those overall total services, and you can scroll through that next slide. And if we look at overall, the number of individuals, and these are unduplicated numbers, not people coming back. Since we started our data collection process back in 2017, we have over 14,000 individuals have received at least one of our services. And in Alamosa County, where we measure not specifically the city, over 7,000 individuals have received at least one of our services. I'll point out that those services might be prevention work through CPR. There might be a child who is in our children's program. It might be an individual receiving food from our food bank. It might be an individual getting services, street outreach services. It might be an individual also staying at our shelter or receive, or a family receiving services through our auto-onti program. Next slide.
So so the next slide talks a little bit about rental assistance, which is the program that I administer over at Crisis Prevention at La Pointe. And it's just showing the, how much Alamosa receives in rental assistance as opposed to the other counties. We, we continue to do that program, and it's actually remained pretty steady over the last five years as far as how many people, how many households participate in that. You can go to the next slide. You can actually skip this slide. It is in your handouts, but it's not super important right now. We get a lot of questions about the shelter because I think a lot of people believe that La Pointe is just a homeless shelter, and they don't actually know that we have many, many more services that make up the majority of our clientele. But we do want to show some of the statistics about the shelter because it's so important to people. You can see here, year by year, the check-ins and how they've gone down. Of course, 2022 is not over yet, so that's only six months worth of check-ins. But it did go down, and I think a lot of that had to do with the pandemic. So we'll see if those numbers even out after we get to a point where we can be in a congregate situation again. On the next slide, you'll see a little bit more about the average night check-ins. And then you'll also see that shelter clients only make up about 6% of the total La Pointe services. I think people think that we serve a lot more people at the shelter than we serve anywhere else, and that's just not true at all. We hardly serve anybody at the shelter, honestly. And then you can also see the breakdown by where people come from. So at the time of entry, we do ask, what was your last county and state of residence where you were last stably housed? And the answers inform the slide that you're seeing right here with the unique people and the unique households. This is a really important slide because people truly believe that we are serving more people from out of town than we are that are local residents of the San Luis Valley, and that's like 83.16% not true. So you can really see that there. If you go to the next slide, you'll see if they weren't last stably housed in the San Luis Valley, you'll see the percentages of how we collect this data. We ask them that question, and then we get some information there. There's one that says heard of La Pointe, and that means that they found us on the internet. And that actually only represents two actual human beings who found us on the internet and then showed up. And that data spans five years. So in five years, only two people have reported that they found us on the internet. And then in the next slide, you'll see that we also have, how do people hear about La Pointe? So that gives you a little bit more of a breakdown of that and maybe more of a comprehensive view. And then if you go to the very next slide, you'll see more about our Employment Readiness Program, which is a new program and is super exciting and is growing really quickly, especially now that COVID assistance is coming to an end and people are needing to get back into the workforce. We have a lot of momentum around that program. There's a lot of people who want to fund these types of programs. So you can see some statistics there about the total clients that we've served for the duration of the program, and it's been in existence since 2019. You can see the enrolled clients for 2022, and then you can see the clients that were enrolled through the shelter specifically. If you go to the very next slide, you'll see our Emergency Housing Activities Program. This is one that I'm particularly proud of because it's COVID-related rental assistance, and it's a program that we've really picked up a lot of extra work for the state of Colorado for this particular program. We serve 22 counties, and you can see some of the breakdown of what we've done there as well.
Okay. So overall, our family services are strong right now in terms of, that's a six-county effort that works with families that actually volunteer themselves for services, for two-gen services that were, where a parent gets enrolled in a service and, and the each, and the children in the, have to also choose one, there's one activity that also benefits the children, so that we're working in a two-gen approach. Our Children's Program, the PALS Program, right, learned a lot of things during the pandemic, became an object of study from the Colorado CDC that we're measuring some of the, some of the best outcomes you can have for children that are experiencing social, emotional abuse. So they're not kids who are at risk. Those are kids that actually went through trauma. And that study continues. We hope to be, our future looks at having a, the PALS Program to have its own home in a, in a new facility over the, over the next couple of years ahead. Crisis prevention resources are, we will see the COVID-related resources are going to be coming to an end, and then we'll hit that baseline of providing other rental assistance. But we felt like we, we played a strong role in our community, and you can see a lot of money that was brought into the community to help our landlords and help other folks, folks remain in their housing. And we just view that as a really strong effort to support our community. And looking at the time I have left, I want to like look into the future, what some of the issues that we have coming on. In the Public Health Emergency is going to be ending in, on July 15th, and which means 60 days after that, people, at the beginning of September, individuals will begin to see a reduction in their food stamps. 2,200 families in Alamosa County will, will be seeing sharp reductions or being eliminated from food stamps. We see, we see that could be a hunger crisis in the making, and so we're working to prepare for that. Likewise, a lot of the ongoing, 196 households that are getting support for us as they're trying to stabilize, that pot of money is going to run out, so we have 196 households that could be fragile. We're working to see if we can get them to a place of stability. We also know that with the housing shortage now, just a reminder or, or a piece of education that just getting a person housed into housing is not the final answer for those that have perhaps addiction or mental illness. They need to have accompanied services where people are getting navigated into services where they, where they learn the skills to retain their housing. It's called Housing Retention Services. Those services are, we're at maximum capacity with that. And so housing alone isn't going to be, it's going to have to be partnered with good services going forward for us to continue to have a positive impact on those people experiencing homelessness. Do you have anything more? Wow. You guys know I'm long-winded, so I guess I can just ramble now. We would be willing to take any questions from, from members of the council.
Okay, I'm going to go with Council Carson and Council Grego. I don't know which one he turns to first, and then Council Veho. Go ahead, Council.
I just had a question. Can you put the PowerPoint back up? I just wanted to, out of my own curiosity, see if I guess my question is, is in 2019, that graph showed a sharp drop towards the end. Did that drop indicate that, because I know homeless hasn't gotten less, it hasn't become less. So did that sharp drop indicate that because of the pandemic and because you couldn't be around each other, because you couldn't be around each other, that's why the services tanked like that? Because you would, that was taken a pretty hard, poor trend, and just.
Thank you. That's a great question. So at the start of the pandemic, we, under the Public Health Emergency and the guidance of Public Health, we could not just pack the shelter out with the 55 beds that it had. We, we could only, because of social distancing, and this is all still in place with Public Health, we were only able to serve about 50% of that number. And, and oftentimes, but you couldn't put two families in a bedroom. So there was a lot of folks, I would say, I use the term piling up on the outside because of, of our inability to accommodate everybody. And, and so consequentially, that particular number that you see that was dropped off are new intakes at the shelter, not new numbers of homeless. Does that help you?
No, I got you. And that's just, I was just verifying what I, my theory was. That aside, you know, any static that we've ever had in the past as far as yours and my personal journey lands through this, I just wanted to say, I went to some sessions at CML last week, and as a community, and I'll say as a community, you guys have been here a long time doing this, but as a community, we're way ahead of the curve, and so I just want to give you guys some kudos on what you're doing every day, what you're doing for people out there. You know, we really are, you know, I see it, what some of these cities are doing now up north, barely, they're barely starting to do. And the numbers that they deal with, and we're kicking butt here. So, you know, not to pat ourselves on the back, but we're doing a great job in managing this situation.
Michael, I agree. I would say that hats off to the Alamosa Homeless Coalition, to ASU, to all the partners we have in law enforcement. We have a lot of partners, so it's, it's a big problem, but we need a lot of shoulders, and I think we have them there.
Yeah, we were texting during the sessions when I was in, asking you questions, and I, and it was because I was so impressed with what we've done here versus, not that I'm not impressed with what they're doing, but I think we're quite a bit ahead of the curve, so thank you guys very much.
We can be better. I will always say we can be better.
I mean, I know it, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Carson. Council Grego, then Council Veho.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Great presentation. There's a lot of good information here, and, and there is people thinking that we advertise bringing people over here, so I'm glad to see the numbers and stuff. My question is, St. Benedict, that we have dotted, right now, I think we have 43 people or something like that in there. How do you guys work with that group? I know you help out, or do you assist them, or you try to find rentals for them? How does that work with your group?
Well, yes, our Street Outreach Program engages individuals at St. Benedict's and although staying elsewhere on a, on a one-on-one basis, the goal is to try to establish a relationship with them. A lot of them are kind of wary of social services, have mistrust for institutions, and, and like to kind of cubbyhole themselves away from society. So as we work to build a relationship with them and trust, we begin to, we work to navigate them into other resources in the community and, and with, with the goal of getting them into housing. So that is our, our goal is housing outcomes with them. And, and it's a slow process, and when we, when we have individuals like that have a voucher, then you try to have to find a house. If we get them a voucher, if we have an individual that gets into housing, you need those housing retention services. And so we have our success stories, but we have a lot of people still waiting that have been, that we've engaged, waiting for that opportunity to come up.
And Lance, we also have an agreement in regards to the huts that we have out there, that they help do the intake and, and look at kind of those priorities we had all agreed on. But they are not enforcement. So if there's any issues where someone's breaking the law or is in a hut and they shouldn't be or things like that, that's then where the city's SRO officers or regular officers would come into play. That's, and we're still making sure there's no confusion on. But we also have that agreement. And Lance, do you, does outreach sometimes provide resources as well? Like backpacks, food, or?
We provide, yeah, food, backpacks, clothing and things. But that provides a dual role. That's part of trying to establish a relationship of trust with them to provide them those things along the way, so that's, it does two different things. Want to shout out to Kenny and his team at Law Enforcement because they oftentimes have to do the harder part of that work.
Well, you know, I was amazed, and I think you, you're the one that did the study out there where almost 80% of the people that are out there at St. Benedict's are people from the valley that have fallen into hard times. And a lot of people also say, oh, well, you guys put a homeless child, homeless area out there, you're just attracting people. It's not that. It's just that some people fall into hard times and, you know, and they're having to, they don't want to live there, but it's, it's, it's an area where they can go there, so.
So, Council, I appreciate the compliment, but actually, the intake form asks how many years? So it was previously shene, so when outreach was doing the intake form, they were collecting that. It goes into a spreadsheet, and that's where I could Sheriff Council, you know, some individuals had been here their whole life, 24 years. You know, those types of things. And so that's how we have that information.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Grego. Council Veho.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Lance, do you guys, and Mr. Grego touched on it briefly, but I think we have a great opportunity, again, to, to speak the truth. Do you guys actively recruit people from the big city to come down here?
Thanks for asking that question. I, I wouldn't have time nor interest nor space to put people, no, and thanks for asking that. And to have some help, you know, support from everybody. If you see a rise in homeless coming around your community, and you know there's a homeless service provider there, you know, Canyon City, all the small towns, that's a common complaint. Because how do you, to, how do you situationally answer that question with numbers going up and, and everything there? But no, I can't think of a single program statewide that would ever do that.
Lance, do you guys bring homeless folks in by the busload to Alamosa?
No, we have not done that.
Thank you, Lance.
And Counselor, I just want to, from full transparency, I think, so I'm glad you asked those very direct questions, so Lance could give those very direct answers. But sometimes if someone is, is leaving one shelter, or if they're leaving the jail, they may research or they may talk, where's another shelter, where's something else? But it's not because of a coordinated activity led by La Pointe. Like, if someone's getting out of incarceration, sometimes there's going to be a list of, you know, housing or homes or different things like that. Is that true, Lance?
That's true.
Okay.
And we do our, we work our best. When you have people in front of you, you know, you want to help those with the greatest need, but trying to recruit more need just does, it does not happen. We do, that's not a strategy.
And we have no control over the list that, that individuals get when they're exiting to other facilities.
Thank you, Heather. I also want to highlight the work that Lance, you guys did with the immediate neighborhood around the homeless shelter, about how we, many years ago, worked with the immediate neighborhood. We sat, got up, we sat at the table, and you came up with different strategies to keep it safe and clean it up and that type of thing, so I want to highlight that. Thank you for doing that. And it's not just, you guys just don't serve homeless folks. Like, students get backpacks and school supplies, and we were just in the pandemic and no one had, you know, some folks weren't working, and you were helping feed people, like, I just really appreciate what y'all do, and, and that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Those are very kind words.
Thank you, Council Veho. Council Hensley.
So again, just to echo, definitely a great report, gave a lot of information. One thing, if you don't mind, just a few minutes on the food bank. And obviously, food costs are going up. They really are, and I, I know I notice it. And so sort of the thought process, how you guys are doing with food in the food bank, and what you're sort of seeing what might happen in the future, especially since you mentioned food stamps and things like that are going to also be lowered at the same time as we're getting into.
Been doing all the talking, okay. First of all, it's a, it's a food bank network, and there's 15 pantries, and there's one, of course, on me, on, in the downtown area, and there's one also at Adams State University. We, the last presentation I gave, you could see that less than 10% of the individuals that use the food bank used it more than twice a year. 90% of those that, of the roughly 6,000 that use it annually used it only once or twice. So we, it is just kind of a backstop for emergencies. Our goal is to give healthy nutritious food there, not like snack crackers and other things. And so we have a nutrition policy. Nutritious food is more expensive than the other stuff that you have there. And so, you know, we're, we're hearing of a food, a food bank shortage up in the, on the front range. Our numbers, our value-wide numbers show that roughly 20% use our food bank here, which is kind of a, would, would be a startling number if you were up in Denver, and those were your numbers. So I do have some worry. Do I also have some good news? You know, Heather tipped me off to a partner with the city, Charter Communications, and I was able to meet with them. And they have, they, they're going to make a nice contribution for the food needs of the food crisis coming up on, on August 12th on our Backpack Day. They're going to come here and talk to Ty, and he's going to join us for that. So, yes, we will continue to have hunger in our community, but it's partnerships and connections and people working together. You know, that one person at a time, and that we're able to make a difference with all of you and your help.
Thank you very much. And I will say, I do feel like the one at Adams State is really building momentum, and more and more people know that it's there that can, like, I know for myself with students, and I can share that that's there, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Liz.
And Lance, thank you and your team for all the work you do throughout our community. Thank you for bringing the helpful information that we can share with our constituents to clarify any confusion that people have in the community. This is very helpful, and thank you for showing up tonight. Keep up the great work.
Last thing, if there are other questions that you wonder, Callie just has all of our data. And, and just the other day, we were going through what kind of questions might we anticipate folks would want? So if you have other questions, then we will do the best to get you the answers that come from our records.
And Mayor, before Lance sits down, while we're still in the discussion of homelessness and St. Benedict, at the last Homeless Coalition meeting, we discussed if we should change the date for our monthly volunteer pickup. So I feel like it's an appropriate time probably to Sheriff Council that we, we do want to move it. Just getting people to leave during the day and expect them to go back after sometimes sweating out there probably wasn't very reasonable. So we're looking at, looking at the third Thursdays from four to six, and then it may just be an hour during the winter time, but during summertime, so that way you're just leaving a little bit early and, and can, can help do some volunteerism. We're also re-messaging that because maybe some of the language we were using was giving individuals the perception that we're cleaning up the trash of individuals who were there versus stuff that's a stuff that's abandoned when someone's left and, and people dumping and some stuff like that. And I will also be asking you, Mayor, to sit down with me. They thought maybe doing a little video with a Q and A of what it's actually like to be out there picking up trash, um, would help dispel some of those perceptions as well. So, um, we'll start getting that education out ASAP, but we are moving that monthly volunteer cleanup. So.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Any, uh, any other comments at this time? Okay. Thank you. Keep up the great work. Thank you. And before we go any further, we usually like to acknowledge elected officials who are in the audience and, um, we have County Commissioner Hersink in the back. We want to thank you for your service and thank you for showing up to our meeting tonight.
It looks like we also have Commissioner Lasky on Zoom.
Yes. Commissioner Lasky is on Zoom. So we have two thirds of the county commissioners here tonight. All right. Thank you. Okay. So that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Under Development Services. First reading and introduction to ordinance number fifteen dash twenty-two.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I will give a gold star to anyone that feels like reading that title aloud. Our city attorneys have the opinion that as long as the title itself answers any possible questions, then we are completely covered when it comes to text amendments. So I have, I have nothing more to say. No. So these are mostly housekeeping. We've gone over these at a work session with, um, city council on May eleventh. They were all recommended for approval by the planning commission. They've been vetted. Um, none of them are substantive. And, um, we can go over them briefly, but I think that we've just discussed them at length already. So fixing typos, we're not even going to go over those. Uh, fixing a handful of instances where the code contradicts itself. And so making the code agreeance with itself in the most recent revisions. We will allow a truck that's associated with a home business at your house, just like if you had a non-home business. So that's just fair. Uh, we change our liquor store rules to match state statutes and to match our own code ordinances because that was out of step. We give our public works director the authority to decide where he gets street cuts. So he gets to decide where the driveways are going to go. Um, we clarify that tiny homes and buildings that are similar are still subject to the International Residential Code and the International Energy Code. We will allow you to put buildings on your own property closer than ten feet together, not to your neighbor's property, but just up to five feet close to a structure and that's your own personal decision because it's your own buildings. We will allow signs on building corners. So Mattress Mary won't be in violation anymore because her sign's really cool or, or Malagros. Those are great signs. We don't like that they're in conflict with our code. We remove our reference to the CDPHE regs for our campgrounds and we require buffer yards if you're in the commercial business district. We increase density for all of our residential, all of our districts actually, except for Ag. And the reason we're doing this is because it was very scaled back after our last, uh, adoption of this UDC in twenty eighteen. We're not really sure what the reasoning was there, but if we're looking to accomplish our housing goals, increasing density is important. So it's a, uh, minor increase. It actually doesn't even go up to the density level that was involved in the old code. So we were brave, but not that brave. We relax some of our open space standards for small scale housing development. So like ten units or less. Uh, we are going to allow offices on the first floor of businesses on the first block of Main. So between Hunt, when you turn onto the one-way going west and, or Denver and Hunt, that whole area that's semi-industrial or hunans is, you will be allowed to have office buildings. And we're hoping that it will really enliven and brighten that first block of downtown and show, show some love to that area because I know we have a lot of people that are interested in offices in downtown and we don't want it in the core, but this is a nice compromise. We will allow group homes, sheltered care facilities and boarding houses in our industrial district by right. They're currently not allowed. And then we'll allow boarding houses in our residential high and mixed use districts with a conditional use. And then finally, we clarify some really tricky language about whether or not you're allowed to build over lot lines or whether you're not allowed to build on an easement, which has been needing to be corrected for a long time. So that's it. It's really glamorous stuff.
All right. Thank you for the glamour. All right. Counsel Vio.
Mayor, I move that we approve on first reading ordinance fifteen dash twenty-two and set up for a public hearing on July twentieth at seven PM or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Susanna.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You have me one more time. I'm not leaving yet.
Okay. All right. Item B, request for building permit fee waiver for the county.
Okay. So we have some nice county representatives in the audience. We have the county administrator, Ronnie Wisdom. We have Commissioner Byrne Hearsink. And they are here because they need to put a roof on their jail. And I figured that we're good community partners. We really like the county. And that I'm pretty sure we can afford to waive the thousand dollar ninety-four fee. So and that's without taxes. If we were charging them taxes, it would be a little bit over three thousand, but it's about a thousand bucks and I think it's a, a nice thing to do for, for our good friends and neighbors.
Okay. Counsel Carson.
I was going to make a motion that we approved the waiver of the building permit fees for the new roof on Alamosa County Detention Center.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Alamosa County, for everything you do. We appreciate it. Start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to, um, the next item on the agenda, Public Works, a motion authorizing three hundred thousand to reline the sanitary line on Main Street from Edison Avenue to Richardson Avenue.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. I think Rachel, she kind of softened you up a little bit for me with her jokes. So I appreciate that. Um, in our, in our last, uh, council meeting, I did an update on the, the cemetery line that runs down Main Street. That's the one that's collapsed twice there, just west of Edison. You know, I proposed an idea. We're going, we, 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 excuse me, we went ahead and researched that. Um, you know, doing that impregnated, impregnated line that's, uh, resin based. We think that's our best solution. What we do is we have a, a section that's about twenty-four hundred millennial feet between, uh, Edison, Ross, right in that area, and it goes all the way to Richardson. Biggest concern we have is it goes underneath the intersection of the, of the state highway. If, if for some reason it collapses under that intersection, we've got some serious issues. So we reached out to a couple of different companies, you know, gave them an opportunity, give us a proposal. They did submit one that was a qualified proposal. It's two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to line this full section of pipe. Um, leaves us a little bit of extra for traffic control. Um, but that would be a long-term solution, we feel, for the section of pipe. We think we have a little bit of time. There's a small section where it's collapsing. The pipe's a little bit bigger. When you have a bigger area of pipe versus the flow, you get kind of a buildup of gas and it erodes the pipe. So the pipe's fifty years old. It's, it's, you know, lived its service life. But we need to, it's not an emergency, but I think it's pretty emergent that we move forward as quickly as we can. I don't think it's something we can wait and plan and budget for. So tonight I'm asking Council to approve the, the three hundred thousand requested and move forward to replacing this line.
And as Harry indicates, it may not be emergent, but when we start to see these lines start to crumble, we, you can sometimes see it further along the line as well. And so we really do think it's time sensitive and um, the other options, cutting the road and all of that would be much more disruptive, obviously, and much more expensive. And so we really do feel this is the best option. We feel like some of our other projects, we might see a little bit of a savings as well as the revenue is, is coming in better than projected in the enterprise fund. So that's how we think we would be able to afford this.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel.
I'm sorry. And I do think timing is, is important, as Heather indicated. Part, part of the concern is that, you know, the prices of piping going up, you know, uh, asphalt, if we were to open cut that, uh, you know, it'd probably triple the cost, not even mentioning what it would take to deal with CDOT in their intersection. Right now, but let us go in and, and impregnate this line and rehabilitate it. So, you know, trying to wait, um, until a later date and budget for it's really going to be tough.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel, uh, Hensley, and then Counsel Carson.
I, I definitely think, I know it's, you know, the chunk of money, but I think it's best to be proactive than reactive. And obviously we've been reactive and you guys have done a great job, you and your staff. Um, obviously in the, the, those intersections where it's happened, but it also disrupts things. And we're putting so much focus right now on Main Street and beautifying it and everything that's going on. But on top of everything is, we don't want it to be such a major collapse. Um, obviously it can have that ripple effect. So I am definitely with the idea of supporting, um, being proactive.
Thank you, Counsel Hensley. Counselor, uh, Carson, and then Counsel Vio.
Is this just, just a curiosity question? Are you, is this the process where they use that balloon? Push the balloon through and it lines it and kind of recodes the inside of the line?
It's a sister process. This, they pull a reinforced fiber sock through and as they pull it through. Yeah. They impregnate it with resin and then they do put, pressurize it and it expands. Sometimes it actually breaks the pipe. Um, as it expands, yeah.
Effective it is.
They think, you know, the reason, it's only been a product of forty years and so far they, they estimate that they're going to get a hu- a hundred-year lifecycle out of them. So I think, you know, hundred years from now, if it, it lives that long, you know, or we do, uh, would be pretty incredible. So I think, I think, you know, twenty, thirty years would be pretty optimistic for this line.
Yeah, I just saw a project that was done that way. It was, I was amazed at what they did and what the technology come forward.
If we can get through the intersection, um, it's, we'll, we'll have to consider it a win, you know, if, if it, there's, there's always a possibility that once they started getting in there and they, what they do is they kind of auger it and clean it. Um, it could start collapsing on itself. If it's in the regular part of the road, we can fix it. If it gets under that concrete, then, then we have some bigger issues. But you know, a wind's getting through the intersection, you know, obviously the goal is to get up through all of it. And I think, I think if we get on it quickly, we can do that.
Make a motion that we approve the three hundred thousand.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I want to thank you and your team, Harry, for all the work you put into this. Appreciate it. Okay. Not, please start voting. Susanna.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. We have a, and, uh, Ms. Brooks, you can clarify before we, uh, move down the agenda. We still have that item on the sidewalks falling.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. We do. Okay. All right. So we'll go to the next item, uh, which is the sidewalk.
Um, so as counsel is aware, um, we've for a very long time, even before I, I came ten years ago, have had a sidewalk program where we open it up to the public. Um, and if they want to participate, city pays fifty percent and they pay fifty percent. Um, I'm not sure everyone in the public realizes that they are responsible for maintaining their sidewalks and keeping them in good repair. That is consistent with every other community across the United States. Um, and it's based on state statute for us. So, um, it's been a fairly successful program with the street sales tax. We increased that from, I don't know if it was maybe around thirty thousand to fifty thousand a year. We increased it to a hundred thousand. Um, one of the things council had talked about wanting to do is to still use maybe approximately half of it for that public process. But then also to take the other half to start looking from an equity perspective of areas of town that don't have a sidewalk at all and to start taking a look at that. Um, something we've been monitoring though, that's been going on, um, with some other communities is this concept of liability. And if individuals are walking on the sidewalk, fall, hurt themselves, are communities liable for that? And a recent case out of Boulder made it clear that if you have a regular program that you are working on from a replacement program and notification to property owners and, and getting it fixed in a timely manner, then no, the city is not going to be held liable. If you don't have something like that, then you might be held liable. And if you think of how many sidewalks we have across the city, that's not something we want to start opening the city up to. Um, and so we do need to have a program that we're diligently pursuing. I got that language from our city attorney. And, um, as Harry and I have sat down, what, what we feel would be a reasonable program is we've never notified property owners that they need to repair their sidewalks. So that's the first thing is to create a nicely worded letter that helps them understand that that is their responsibility. We do have very, we have preliminary, maybe ninety, ninety-five percent done kind of data of the quality of our sidewalks. We probably need to kind of double check it and, and make sure it's up to date. But what we would do is kind of have some properties where there's a fairly significant risk to the public. A lot of times if you envision maybe a tree, tree root where the sidewalk's going like this, or you know, something like that. Um, we would do the notification to say, we need you to fix it. And it would be a quicker timeframe. And the goal would be to get them to come under this year's sidewalk program. We still have a significant amount of funds available. So that would still allow fifty percent to be covered by the city. And for those that we're putting a little pressure on to move quickly, um, to commit to this, we could also offer an agreement that they can pay us back over six months type of situation. Talking to Harry, um, the ones that are the worst are usually maybe just two of those slabs. Usually running maybe two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars type of thing, half of it. So I don't want you guys thinking a neighbor's going to get a letter and suddenly they're out three thousand dollars. That's not typically what that's going to be. Um, you usually don't have to have the whole sidewalk replaced. That's an, that's an extreme situation. So anyways, for those, there'd be a little bit of pressure to get those in. Those that probably need to be, that still need to be repaired, but aren't as urgent, we can give them a year or two. Um, but we need to start the notification, make them aware of the sidewalk program. They would be prioritized from a cost share perspective. Um, and so I wanted to share this with counsel essentially for, for two reasons. Um, we know the minute people start getting those, those letters, you're probably going to receive some calls. Um, we'll send you a copy of what the letter says and, and all of that, but I want to make you aware of that. The other though is that means we may have to delay the equity focus for about two years. We, we probably have about a two-year backlog of some sidewalks that need to get repaired from a liability perspective as what we're estimating. Um, so I wanted to make sure we didn't suddenly change course and, and lost sight of that equity, um, focus that you guys had provided. And with that, Harry, did I miss anything?
No, I, I think you covered it. This year, you know, as we're getting into a later start, we'll tackle what we can. And then next year we'll get the program rolled out earlier where we can get maybe kind of the tier-two sidewalks or risk, get them on the list and get them replaced.
I, I had a question.
Go ahead, Counsel Grego.
Good. Uh, you talked about, uh, areas that don't have sidewalks. How are you going to approach that? I?
What we want to do is reconvene the committee we use to help us pick the street projects. So our street committee. We want to, because they were, they were the ones that actually initially brought up, are you using the sidewalk program the best way? Because there were some equity issues. So we want to reconvene them to help kind of make recommendations on that. And then we bring those back to council from an equity perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. Any other comments? No? Okay.
And there's nothing to vote on. I just, we wanted to make sure we provided an update for council on that.
Thank you for that update.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Counsel Vio.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. If, if there's a, a, a set of sidewalk that's pretty dangerous, we write them a letter and say, you have to change this and fix it. What if they don't want to?
If they don't, then we would have to take a look at how we, we would probably use the same process, how we mitigate other nuisances, which we do a notification that if you don't fix it by this day, because they can pick their own and go through the private and pay the full cost and, and all of that. I, I don't know why they would do that. Um, but we would address it like we do other nuisances and then have to look at, um, assessing a fee to them for what that cost is.
Thank you, Counsel Vio. Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Reynolds. Okay. We'll go ahead to the next item on the agenda. An update on the concern of the district attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm not sure if I provided the final number of the city resources expended. So at the last update, so I want to go ahead and just provide it. If it's redundant, um, forgive me. So the total amount of city resources dedicated to that effort was eight thousand, seven- So the total amount of city resources dedicated to that effort was eight thousand seventeen dollars. Of that though, only one thousand five hundred and twenty-five was an actual expenditure of funds. The rest was tracking of staff time. Um, and those types of things. Channel seven has run, um, some additional coverage of the situation. Um, the Denver Gazette has been asking questions and so, and I think. They've run one and might be planning on some future ones. And then we also received a core request from the Colorado Sun, so we could anticipate potentially, um, coverage from that as well. Um, the mayor has sent two letters to the editor, one related to his meeting with law enforcement and the other. With those victimized by the district attorney's office. In addition to the core requests that we've been answering for the Colorado Sun. We also had an inquiry from the secretary of state as they look into if the. Organizers of the recall paying group, um, needed to. Register as a group and, and what that group is and what their activity has been and, and those types of things. So we've been. Answering those questions and what that re- relationship is with the city and most, most of it's what it's not and that type of stuff. As a reminder, um, the protest period is where we're at right now. Um, that deadline is July eighth, so that's this Friday. If a protest is not filed, then the governor has to set the election between thirty. And sixty days from July eighth. If there is a protest filed, there's nothing in the statute that dictates how long the secretary of state has to address that protest. Once the protest is addressed, then the governor has that same window of thirty to sixty. But then once, if it gets close to the ninety days within the next regular election, it would fall within that. So, we will find out if there is a protest. The secretary of state usually does not notify us until the deadlines. And so I, I don't anticipate to hear anything until July eighth. Any questions? That's all I have from an update.
Yeah, we have two questions, Counselor Vio and Counselor Vio.
Did we finally get some final figures on what it's gonna cost, uh, the counties to run this election? All the different six counties, somebody threw.
So the total cost, I believe, was around ninety-four to ninety-six thousand.
And that's divided amongst the six.
It's gonna be divided based on their population and, and those types of, the costs to put it out to the residents.
So, i- in our case, would the city be paying part of it? So it's gonna be Alamosa County paying the.
Yes, just like if any resident came to us and did a petition and forced us to have an election, they don't pay for it.
I just wanted to see if we got some final figures on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vio, Counselor Vio.
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, is there a deadline? Where he can quit?
My understanding is if there's not a protest, once it moves into the governor's sphere. That he would contact the candidate to find out if they are willing to resign before setting the election, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay, and so questions so far?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us, uh, to the next item on the agenda, committee reports. Have any committee reports? Okay, Counselor Carson.
So, at the last cog meeting, uh, at the last cog meeting. We actually, it was a special cog meeting that was called to discuss this particular issue, um. We talked about ten forty-one regulations, uh, for counties and municipalities. Um, ten forty-one regulations are pretty complicated. They can be used for a lot of different things. But one of the things that, one of the mandates or the criteria of that that came out of that meeting was. In thirty days from that meeting, we were gonna show up with what we brought to our council. So, what I had to do tonight was. Put it to council to see if it would be okay with council if myself and Eric. Represented the city on that committee. There's a committee that will be put together. The cost will be somewhat, we still haven't worked it out, but it's gonna be footed. By the cog, by the cog through, through some method and that cost will be to. Pay for a facilitator who's an attorney that does these ten forty-one regulations. This attorney will sit with the counties, municipalities. And we will start a process of developing, uh, templated. Um, version of this and, and then, you know, we'll move forward through working, we'll work through the bugs a little. Of course, it could take a while, it could take a few years or so. But that's one of the things I had to, to, um, talk to council about. To get it on your guys radar, uh, I think we got about three weeks left before that next meeting. Um, and, you know, we'll just see how it goes. It would be our, our, the rep, our attorney. And then a representative chosen by council. Basically is the way it is, or not chosen by council, but the representative that represents the council. So, that's where we're at, just putting that out there for Heather and for Eric to, to ponder, um. It'll be, the process will be led by, uh, I can't remember the other lady's name. Her name is Barbara and then there's Greg Dahl. Jerry Dahl, um, who assisted so watching writing their ten forty-one permits. But according to. Everybody involved in this kind of process throughout the state, those two are the best people to get, so that's who they. Yes, that's, um, her or Jerry Dahl. We will retain one of those two to sit down and work through it. And, and the goal is to create a process that would insulate. You know, kind of create an insulation for the entire valley as a whole. To protect ourselves from outside predators that would want to, uh, move water from the basin. And, and with that, we would use the aquifer as a joining. Thing, you know, the aquifer would be our joining factor that would bring us all together to work on this. So. Be something we'll have to chat about, but I should need to put that out there.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Hey, Counselor Vio, then Counselor Henson.
Okay, uh, I was gonna give it to Alamosa Homeless Coalition, uh, deal, but the city manager and. Lance already pretty much talked about the whole program. I wouldn't, I wanted to talk to, uh, maybe a couple of things here, uh. I believe it was Kelly that talked about, uh, the rental program. Where the funding that should have lasted to twenty twenty-five is completely out. So that's gonna be one of the tough deals. Uh, we're looking for a grant for, from Alpar Mar for cameras. To cover the whole camp.
And we did get that grant.
Oh, we did get it?
Yes, sir.
Good. And, uh, then there, there's, uh, fifteen small huts now out there at San Benedict's. And like they would mention earlier, there was, there's forty-six people living out there. One thing that I did want to emphasize is the fact that, uh, anytime we say, well, we're gonna go out there and clean. And I, a lot of people, we get a lot of kickbacks, say, well, we don't even clean our own house and why are we gonna go clean over there? What, what we want to translate out there is the fact that we're out there to maintain something that. We will, you know, because the people out there maintain a lot of stuff. And as the city manager said earlier, there's people that move out and this, they, they leave the stuff there, you know? So for us to say that we're just gonna go out there and help them clean, those people are pretty much maintaining their areas. We go out there and, and pick up some other stuff and then if wind blows and it, it, the neighbors get. Stuff in there, we try to maintain it, try to keep a happy balance out there. So. It's, it's something that, it's a work in progress and, and something that, uh, I think the people out there, they don't want to be out there, but they have to. Find a place to be out there. So, that's, that's all I got. Did I miss anything, Heather, or no?
Thank you, Counselor Vio. Counselor Henson?
So, uh, had our first executive meeting, um, for the year for CML. And, uh, had a great meeting, uh. Obviously, a very, very busy legislative year. And so, lots of great things that CML supported. And, uh, was able to advocate and make happen. I am leaving tomorrow for Greeley for our retreat for CML. I will tell you, um, that you all should be proud that Alamosa has big shoes to fill from when I was president. And, um, because whoever's president hosts the, uh, retreat. And to this day, everybody says we gotta live up to Alamosa standards. So I thought I would share that. That was brought up quite a bit, so.
Good deal. Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Vio?
Oh, I'm sorry, just.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief Chapman mentioned something in our staff meeting that I thought was worth passing along. I don't even, there he is. You didn't know I was gonna do this. Um, it's, he said June has been the busiest. Month from a call perspective that they've had in thirty years. Um, so if you see a firefighter or volunteer firefighter out there or our chief who is here. Um, I think they've been running ragged out there and, um, some fires, some traffic accidents. Um, those types of things. And it's the busiest June they've had in over thirty years. And it, that doesn't look like it's trending down. And so I just want to share that. Also wanted to share that it is Harry's birthday today. He made fun of me for not connecting the reason why they had a cake in his office today. So, paybacks. Pie, pie. Um, it's also been busy for park staff, um, police, public works. Um, this was a fantastic weekend that we just had. It was really busy with a lot of events. Um, I also want to thank our partners with the marketing board. Um, First Friday was amazing. Um, the weather held out for us, which was great. Um, Elizabeth, what she's doing to get the businesses engaged and to get vendors, there's one vendor that came all the way from Fowler. Um, to, to be a part of our First Friday, but if you walked, the businesses had their doors open. Several of them had artists or vendors inside to draw people in. I know Altitude Appliance had a face painter. Um, there was a, a DJ, so there's music, just all the baby goats again, which who doesn't love petting a baby goat? So it was, it was really, really awesome to see. We had the Chamber Young Professionals who organized the block party Saturday night, really well attended. I heard from a lot of people how creative having the bubbles was, um, for the kids. I saw a lot of great pictures for that. Um, and again, this is just a volunteer group organizing this for our community. And so that was really great to see. And then, of course, on the fourth, we had the parade, um, also organized by the chamber. But as I looked up and down the streets, I think there's thousands of people, um, in that activated space and on the sidewalks and, and all of that. And so it was just a really great event, but I want to thank all the staff from a behind-the-scenes perspective of what it takes. For these events to happen and these activities to happen. Um, it's getting up and, and putting out cones and signs, you know. At six AM, seven AM, the morning before the parade and just things like that. So, I want to do that. Also, um, the last thing I have is, I put at your desk, um, the, the chamber. The, the, not chamber, the Alamosa Visitors Guide. And they've made this, it's always been a high-quality, um, publication. But I want to point out, if you go to page eighteen, Elizabeth was so darn excited. She's like, this is the first year that there's enough consistently going on downtown that we could have a spread on the Alamosa downtown. And so, as, if you look at page eighteen, it talks about the historic downtown walking tour. The artscape program, the farmer's market, the First Fridays, um, that they're helping to coordinate. Um, and then the pictures and, and everyone enjoying the downtown. If you flip over to page twenty, they've got a whole focus on everything that we're trying to do on activating the river. And, um, Andy's group had been focusing on that with, um, SLV Go and other partners. And then you go one more page to twenty twenty-two and they're looking at, you know, where can you go to look at leaves and all that? Well, guess what? A lot of those are trails and everything. And so, yes, all this work has been great from a quality of life. And, and so, so very important, but it also ties into these types of publications to help from a tourism perspective. Which helps our economy. And so, um, I just wanted to say, take a few minutes when you get home, look through this. It's actually. It makes you proud to, to be in this community and, and to know the different roles that, that we've played in trying to. Make this community better. And so, I wanted to make sure you had that. And Mayor, with that, I'm, I'm done.
Wow, then, this is impressive. Thank you so very much, uh, Ms. Brooks, for bringing this to our attention. Okay, this brings us to the next item on the, uh, agenda. We have a local liquor license item, consent calendar B, Counselor Vio.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar B.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Susanna.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the last item on the agenda for the night. We have, uh, council comments. Counselor Carson.
Question.
Followed by Counselor Hensley. Go ahead, Counselor Carson.
Uh, my question is for Rachel or Heather, um. What, do you guys have a date on the certificate of occupancy for Iron Horse?
Rachel, would you like to come answer that one? I believe we still have the paving of the parking lot. So we can get a fire truck to them to be completed before we can give them a temporary certificate of occupants.
That is correct. I don't really have anything to add to that, but I, I did tell them in rather no uncertain terms that. Temporary occupancy means you can have people in those buildings that day. And we're not comfortable, at the, at the very least, we're not comfortable issuing those until a fire truck can access both sides of those buildings.
And this has been communicated both verbally and in writing for over six to eight months. Of what they needed to do to get a temporary certificate of occupancy. Nothing's been added, nothing's been changed. They've had the ball in their court for a very long time.
Short of paving for them, I'm not sure how else we can help. And please don't have us pave for them, because Harry will never talk to me again.
Oh, I'm just wondering, because I got a call, they were, they had a lot of people who were. Suffering basically waiting to get in there. They've been waiting and they're putting, you know, getting pushed off. So, um, the lady said they had had a couple of people drop out because they had to leave, because they couldn't wait any longer. So, you know, I, I just have this, this weird vibe about it, because we've. Everything we do lately is about housing and the housing crunch and people out on the street, you know, we just had La Puente. And, and to me, it's a little almost silly that we won't allow a fire truck to drive on dirt. So I'm just kind of curious as to, you know, what, if they have like one side barricaded and you can't drive through. I just, I just find it a little bit, it, it doesn't compute, you know, how, how we. Every day we're pushing, talking about the housing crisis and we have this place ready to, to be occupied and, um. Something so, I, I think so manageable, like, to me, it seems like you would just take the barricades down on one side and I. Pretty sure fire trucks can drive on dirt, I didn't know that they couldn't. But, you know, I just, to me, it's a little perplexing. I'm just curious.
Well, and for me, Counselor, it's, it's frustrating, to be honest, because they've known for over eight months. To get a temporary certificate of occupancy, which means they don't even have the rest of it from a full occupancy perspective. They, they've known for over eight months what it would take. And so from a project management perspective. They should have the full capacity to meet these requirements. There's no surprises. There's no reason, honestly, with the timelines they were giving us in the beginning, that they were wanting to be done by now, but. I don't know if it's been some mismanagement of the project or not. Figuring in the weather and you can't do some of the construction in the middle of winter, um, surprised them. Um, but these are not, this is, if you're a professional builder and you're doing these kind of construction projects. These are not anything that's new or hard or unexpected type of thing.
No, I, I, I understand all that. I'm not casting the blame on us. What I'm saying is, is, you know, it's just a little bit strange to me that that's what's holding them up.
It, and, and it's my understanding that the fire truck can't travel on that kind of dirt. So I, I mean, not to put Chief Chapman on the spot, but, I mean, everything else, we have really waived. I mean, we've said, you can fix Maroon Drive after you have people moved in, you can do finish work after people have moved in. Like, we've waived things we don't waive. But I, I don't think that a fire truck can get to those sides of the building, but I don't know how much they weigh.
One of them weighs seventy-eight thousand pounds. So we gotta have pretty solid ground, but there's also other issues going on on the fire side of it. Uh, with the sprinkler system in the building, uh, they haven't been finalized yet. They haven't completed the work in order to get the final inspection on the sprinkler system yet. One example is they went in and poured thrust blocks. For the pipe supplying the sprinkler systems, buried the thrust, buried everything without an inspection on it. So I made them dig them back up so we can inspect the thrust blocks. They use subcar cement or whatever, so all that was crumbling. If we wouldn't have made them dig it up. Those pipes could have shifted underground and we'd had a big mess. So there's more to it than just putting a truck in that.
Well, thank you, because I was confused that a truck couldn't drive through there. That was what they told me.
So, wait, you know, I'm not gonna give on that, because that's a requirement. If we give on that, how long are we gonna give on it?
No, I, I, I was curious. I, to me, it just seemed a little weird that a truck couldn't drive through there. I didn't understand what the reason.
Yeah, there's a lot more to it than just driving a truck through there, so that's.
Yes, but it is still the truck. I want to make sure that that point wasn't missed. We're not gonna bend on the truck.
Yeah, I'm not gonna give anything on that either. Yeah, I'm not gonna give anything on that either, so.
There's a, there's a two-page list, two-page punch list of what they need to do. And we boiled it down to the one thing, and I know it seems oversimplified, but it genuinely is, if there's a fire on those parts of the building, there's not, there's a chance we won't be able to get to them. And we're not, you know, those are forty-five living units and we're not willing to risk anybody's life for fire safety just so they can meet their budget deadlines.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Carson. Counselor, um, Hensley, then Counselor Vio.
Well, Heather kinda stole all the punch when she talked about all the fun things this last week. But I will just say, so I'm not gonna repeat what you said, but I totally agree that we are in such a vibrant, um, community. There's so much to do, there's great people to meet, uh, just, uh, the interactivity is, is contagious. And so what I see is that it's going on, on a daily basis, uh, even having the Kiwanis breakfast. And here again, all of you in the back row, all of you leaders are doing a fantastic job with your groups, your, your staff and things like that in supporting all of this. Um, and the exciting energy shows through too. There's a way to do this where you can be just like, I have to do this. Or doing it with the idea that, hey, let's have fun and be part of the community. And I just think that's really awesome. And daily, you're, we're just seeing so much stuff. And I think, um, all of the things are starting to come together and I'm excited to see things as they grow. And I obviously am biased, I'm seeing things firsthand, but I wanna thank Bruce and David for coming to city council. Um, I am super excited when they talk about the optimism. There is without doubt so much optimism. There's so much excitement for what's gonna happen. And I'm looking forward with my city council hat, that idea of that true partnership with Adam State and with all of the other community members and how we all together can continue to do what we've been doing so far. So that's what I have to say for today.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor, uh, Vio?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to acknowledge, so summertime is huge, there's all kinds of people, everything's going crazy. Um, but another group that's bringing in a lot of people over the summertime to help, um, to put butts in beds and buying things and that is Adam State. And I'm not saying this because the president's here, but, um, the athletic programs have had summer camps over the last month and a half. Volleyball, the, the Adam State volleyball camp is starting tomorrow, their team camp, they're gonna have over a hundred and forty teams here. Six gals per team, plus parents, plus, but there's gonna be, that, that camp alone's gonna bring over a thousand people to Al, to Alamosa for three days, which is huge. So kudos to them and basketball, a couple of weeks ago, that was awesome. And all the other programs are doing stuff too. Um, I wanted, I don't know if, if you all were aware, but, uh, the Alamosa County clerk resigned last week, effective immediately. And I went to a meeting this morning at the county commissioners and, uh, they have a, a great plan in place to get that, um, office staffed and going, and they have interviews lined up. And so ju- just for people to know that, uh, the, the county commissioners and Ronnie are, are, uh, are doing what's needed to get that office running and, and working again. So thank you to those guys.
Thank you, Councilor Vio. Okay, now I'll go ahead and wrap things up. Good, all right? Okay, wanna thank, uh, all of our council members and staff who went to CML. A very educational, uh, experience and bonding opportunities, so I appreciate everyone who showed up and went there. Um, Liz is kinda like a rock star. When you're hanging out with her at CML, everybody knows her, so it was pretty cool. She's right about the shoes that needs to be filled because she did represent, just, just saying, you did represent. Uh, the Fourth of July took a lot of, uh, people in the community. I wanna thank all of our staff, PD of Fire Department, EMT, uh, staff members who helped out to make it, uh, be a success in the community as well. Uh, so good to see several thousand people out there, um, as we traveled down the parade line and a lot of council members who participated, uh, as well. So thank you for that. We had a few ribbon cuttings, at least three over the past week. Um, the, the, we had the recycle building, which was a, a, a great addition for the, the city to have to make sure that we have a safe place for cardboard, uh, now that won't blow away. We had a ribbon cutting for the, uh, mural as well on, uh, State Street, which turned out to be very beautiful. Wanna thank all the council members who showed up last week, uh, to the different ribbon cuttings as well. And, uh, the Rio Grande Farm Park, they, they opened up their, uh, market today. And that was a, a good event and hopefully that'll be something that keep people traveling, uh, through our community. I didn't acknowledge Commissioner, uh, Ronnie Wisdom, who's here earlier, so I, I didn't see you earlier now, I'll see you, but thank you for being here as well. And then finally in closing, just because Heather brought this up, I, I would, really would like for you all to join me in singing Happy Birthday to Harry.
Mayor, 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 there's, there's another birthday boy in, in, up here.
Oh, really?
He's sitting right next to you.
Councilor Regal too.
His birthday's coming up on Saturday.
On Saturday, okay. All right, well, we're gonna. Well, happy birthday to you too, uh, Councilor Regal. All right, everybody, um, we'll go ahead and do a duo birthday with one song though, okay? One, two, three. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Harry and Charlie. Happy birthday to you. All right, thank you. This meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.